Okay, we're gonna call to order the pre-agenda meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. And Ms. Jones, could you review any adjustments to the agenda?
We have two adjustments to the agenda. The first is the addition of closed session under attorney-client pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. And the other is to add an item under unfinished business, which is the Bluefield Road proposal.
There any additional adjustments to be made?
Mrs. Chair.
Yeah, you had so.
Under new business, I would like the opportunity to give the board a very, a very quick briefing over what's going on with the I-77 corridor transportation. There was a meeting in Mooresville today that I attended, and I think, I think it's worth our board being aware of it, but also the public being aware of it as well.
Would you like to do this at the seven o'clock hour?
I think seven o'clock would be more appropriate. And I really hate it considering, you know, our package. It's not war and peace, but it came close.
Well, hopefully the consent agenda will take care of the vast majority of it.
When I finish reading this thing, I'm waiting for Rhett Butler to kiss Scarlett.
That's an interesting visual. All right. Okay, we don't have any presentations this evening, aware of. We do have two appointments. One, Brian Duncan from Icare at seven o'clock for his annual presentation of the Community Services Block Grant Anti-Poverty Plan. And we also have a presentation by Bradley Johnson, our ICAT's Director on Service Update for Fiscal Year 2020. And Bradley, do you want to give us a little bit of a heads up there, particularly since there's some rather significant reduction in services that have been proposed?
Yes, good evening. We are, this request kind of looks like it's all over the place, and it, it kind of is, because we are having multiple issues that are going on that is forcing us to have a service reduction. We had a federal grant, which was JARC, Job Access Reverse Commuting, which was supposed to expire in 2015. We were able to go around and find different agencies that had little allotments of money that they weren't using, and were able to get all of that transferred to us. So we were able to gain about another $500,000 to be able to keep that program going. But we've, we've known that it was gonna expire. We've just been hopeful that something would come to replace it, and nothing has. So the, the JARC program has expired. A lot of those individuals who were riding under that program, we've tried to shift them to other programs that we had. And one of our problems is that CATS is the designated recipient for the region for 5310 funding. They have not awarded us any FY '17, '18, or '19 operating funds. So the, them holding back the funds, and then JARC expiring, has caused us to have to be able to have a fixed route service reduction in order to have a balanced budget for this FY 2020.
Now, what do you mean, these funds hadn't even been applied for? Or they haven't, they've been authorized but not released?
Yes, they've been authorized by the FTA, but CATS has to, CATS has to have a formula to be able to distribute the funds evenly in an equitable system. It, 2016 was the first year that we ever received any 5310 urban funding, which we should have been eligible for in 2010. And so, you know, it was, they were six years behind. In '16, we received 13's money, and it's been a delayed process ever since. We've just been trying to get them to allocate the funds so that we can, we can use the funds. They were letting the funds lapse prior to us.
Okay, so that's not acceptable. How do we, where are the right belly buttons to push in this process? Do you need to start with our congressman?
Well, it's, I guess it's, we've been, this has stirred up a hornet's nest between CATS, FTA, the state, and, and the MPO. And so it's, it's actually, it's the MPO and CATS's responsibility to delegate out the funds. They are just, they do not need to work in the current fiscal year's budget because of the tax base that they have. So they, they are eligible, I mean, they're able to work in, you know, old, old money.
Is, is Union County in the same situation?
They are, and Union is standing here beside of us, basically. I mean, they are, you know, fighting with us to get this.
Okay, well, we need to be elevating this to a higher level. You know, as a commission, we should be taking a stand, writing a letter, copying the powers that be, and requesting some immediate action. There's no excuse for having lapsed funds in this situation.
And CATS is, CATS's excuse at this current time is that the state changed the process in how the funds were, it had to be adopted on a local level before it could ever go on the state's agenda, to be adopted on the state level, to have a STIP amendment. And so usually, you know, you were able to put it on the state's agenda at the same time it was on the local agenda, and, you know, it was, you know, be something that would be done in a month or so. But now it's taking, you know, about three, three to six months to get it completed, because you're, you know, you have to request it to on the local agenda, come time, you get to that approval.
Agenda of who? Is that CRTPO?
Yeah, the CRTPO. And so we have a request for it to, to be on the agenda. It was, it's supposed to be announced in January, but we're hoping that they will announce it and, you know, accept the resolution in January, so then it can go to the state to be on the state agendas for March.
They're not having a meeting in December.
Is that the City of Charlotte or Mecklenburg County is the MPO?
No, it's the region.
It's the CRTPO.
CRPTO is the MPO.
Correct. Which the City of Charlotte.
Basically.
Basically.
I mean, so Bob, Bob Cook is a City of Charlotte employee, although he is, you know, his job title is with the CRTPO Planning Director. And so that's where CATS is the designated recipient, but it's up to the MPO to approve a formula to distribute those funds.
And. Well, we need, we need to get a letter out to Bob Cook. You know Bob. But we need to ask him to make sure that this matter is expedited on the January agenda.
We, we asked for it to be done in, in October, and they were, said that they were hiring a new plan, a transit planner, and so this will be the first item on their agenda. That is now got pushed back. The person, I think, is supposed to start the first of January, but it's, you know, it's.
Well, you know, this, this result is just not acceptable for these kind of reasons. I'm, you know, cutting back services that impact people's lives that are, if the money's there, and just because they don't have to have it because they got a big budget, I mean...
But the money that typically gets paid to Iredell County ICATs, it's there, it just hasn't gotten dispersed.
Correct.
It hasn't been redirected somewhere.
No, it hasn't, hasn't been redirected. They just, it's, it's sitting there in, I guess, in their...
Now, that's the 5310 money, is it right?
It is, yes.
So what, what does that cover out of these services that are being modified or reduced?
Well, so we, ICATs usually is able to subsidize part of the Mitchell Route. Well, we've been subsidizing the full cost of the Mitchell Route, and then about $60,000 to the Mooresville Main Route, and then we, about the, the whole thing of the Iredell Express. And so with, with having to subsidize, or be able to cover the 5310 trips, we're having to cut back on our subsidies for these other fixed route services.
The jar money's gone, it's not coming back.
It's, it's not coming back, and I don't see it coming back anytime soon, I mean, especially with the unemployment rate at the, you know, where it's at. I mean, you know, I mean, that, that's what it was, it was originally designed to get people back to work.
Well, you gotta get them to and from work. That's the issue.
And, and one of the things that we're, we're doing is, I mean, we're not leaving these people out to dry who are currently riding with us. We've reached out to their employers and hoping that their employers see them as a valuable employee, and they will be able to cover, you know, the cost of their trip to and from work. I mean, to, for us, I mean, it's a nightmare if someone lays out of work or, you know, can't, doesn't show up, so, I mean, I would be more than happy to pay for somebody to get to work, I mean, you know, to ensure that they're there.
And part of the problem was Mitchell College, some of their students going back and forth, they were paying a, a certain amount, and then instead of just a reduction in amount, they went to zero. So those funds went away, so we were gonna try to reach out to Dr. Brewer and see if we could get some of that back. We just haven't had time to do that yet.
And there's nothing else on our end that we could have done, or need to do, or anything that's, other than this board taking action to try to...
The guy, he's in the Army, what's his name? He's out of Union County as well.
Uh, Bjorn, Bjorn Hansen?
Bjorn Hansen, that's right. Okay. If, if y'all would get together, and if y'all would get together and put together a couple of slides or something for me, I'll ask to be put on the CRTPO agenda and, and say, hey, this, you know, you want regional planning and regional cooperation? If this is what it looks like, this is not good.
Don't drive the regional money.
I don't think, I don't think that'd ever make the agenda. It had to get fixed before then.
And, and that's what, so we, when we took it to Bob, you know, that was what Bob was the one who asked us to withhold it until the new planner got on board. And, but this has also been able to, we have never been, we have never received any 5303, which is transit planning money. The region receives about a million dollars a year. This, this argument, or this, you know, dispute right here has brought it to, I got an email Monday morning that there's a call for projects for 5303 money, that it has to be turned in by the 30th of this month. But it was, it was one of those things that was already on the agenda for the January meeting, but now since this is, you know, created a little bit of a ruckus, they've went back and decided that, hey, we need to let Iredell and Union both, you know, submit projects for this, you know, pot of a million dollars, because we're eligible for it. I mean, Union should be getting about 6% if you go off of the national formula, and we should be getting about 7%.
I think what the, what their intent is, is to get CRTPO to, to do the big comprehensive study, so it's not like, I, I don't know necessarily that they're trying to keep you from having money to do studies, because we're actually looking at maybe staffing up a little bit, doing the studies ourselves, and we talked about that in a, in a previous meeting. What, what my, I would say, we can kind of keep, keep this discussion confined a little bit, and that is, if there's money that's been allocated, that you should get, that they say you should get, but you've not gotten, we need to be able to put that into five slides or less, maybe one or two more, and, and tell them I'm coming.
And share the impact.
I promise you, they won't want, they won't want that to happen. That will not be possible. And, and, and that's what Charlotte Television is doing, okay? So that's what you do. Put that together and say, we're, Ken's coming with these slides, and I'll make a motion from the floor to let me make that presentation. I promise, this thing will get resolved before we get to that. Okay? But you gotta get me those slides.
All right, we can do that.
With the jar money drying up, i- if you get, if you get the 50, 5310 money, you still gonna be able to provide what you used to, or will there be a certain amount of cutback because of the jar money?
Uh, there'll, there'll be a certain amount of cutback that will have to happen, because those people don't qualify for any other funding source. You know, but we're hoping that with those employers, where those people, we've already reached out to the employers so that they will, you know, maybe help pick up the, you know, it's easy for them to say, oh, no, we're, we're not gonna do that when we're continuing to bring the person to work. But the first day that we say, hey, we can't bring the person to work anymore, they're probably gonna be picking up the phone calling us at that point, you know? But, you know, it's, it's hard to, you know, you don't have any leverage until you...
There's, there's a lot of, you know, whose job is it to get to work? You know, who's, who's financially obligated to get, you know, Dick and Jane to work? But, but we don't wanna muddy that issue with, there's money in the pipe, it's just going into the pipe, it's just not coming out of the pipe that says Iredell County.
Correct.
We don't wanna confine what we talk about into that.
Corral the first, the main thing, be the main thing.
But we've got to look down the road and say, in the absence of these funds, is there an alternate funding source? If it's not 5310, maybe it's 5303, or it may be more fungible, I don't know. But we need some dollar amounts put to this so that we understand what the shortfall is, and...
With the reduction of the service that we have listed there, it would save us about $270,000, which that would be about the deficit that we're, we think that we'll be in if we don't have the reduction in service.
So at the end of the day, if this is something that will affect us two, three years out, if we get the, the funds released, then we need to do a very sharp critique of the programs themselves, and whether they rise to the level of, you know, us picking up some funding or not, if we have that available. I mean, it's just one of those competing issues, and as Commissioner Robertson is fond of pointing out, you know, when you have grants, when the grants go away, the service or the people funded by those grants go away unless we decide that that service is something we can't live without, or the people can't live without. And so we need to posture ourselves so that we're not just slam up against all of a sudden services being discontinued or curtailed without us having some foreknowledge of that.
Yeah, and one of the things, the state budget has also affected this. You know, we only got our, last Thursday, we were able to get what our rope allotment is, and so with that rope allotment, it has affected the amount of employment money, which is, that we, we're thinking that we'd be able to use as part of the, you know, transition process, but...
Rope allotment, you growing hemp or something?
No, that's, rope is the Rural Operating Assistance Program, so...
Everything's an anchor now.
Yeah, so it's, you know, we, we, we've not really known where we were at, but we knew we could, you know, we could sustain it, the service for, you know, for three quarters of the year.
If, if I can, and I, and I apologize to the board for, for heading down this rabbit hole, but I, I just think we have to, to make sure everybody understands something. 1946, the baby boomers started getting born, the end of the official boom generation, 1960. That's a 14-year period. The folks that were born in 1946 turn 67 in 2013. 2020 minus 2013, that's seven years. So we're halfway through, the boomers coming, exiting the... At ex, at age 67, I would say, most of them are out of the workforce, most of them are collecting social security, all of whom are, are on Medicare. The federal government is broke this month, and they are, and it's gonna get worse for seven more years. There's not gonna be big funds coming from the feds that bail these programs out. The state isn't in much better shape either. So just know, just know that at some point, at, at some point, we might not be doing as much as we used to do. Because you gotta remember, the CRT, the, the funding that he gets from CRTPO is part of the state and North Carolina's transportation pot. And what do we say, there's $8 billion of road, not buses, and not, not what you do, but asphalt on top of gravel. $8 billion worth of requests on the books yesterday, $1 billion of funding chasing it. There's gonna be a lot of people trying to make your slice of the pie smaller. Why do I say this? I'm not trying to be doom and gloom. We have to be realistic about what the funding stream looks like in the future, and is it gonna get better or worse? And I would say that we should not assume that it's gonna get better anytime soon. So that's it.
Mr. Johnson, what, what percentage does Iredell County fund in your budget? Roughly?
I would think less than, less than a percent or two.
Yeah, it's, it's very small, isn't it?
Yeah, very, very small. It's a, I think it's $45,000 for just general this year, and then it was, I think, $70,000 for dialysis transportation.
It makes it hard to, to, to react to cuts like this when you're only that small of participation. I'd like to say one more thing. Brad, that's the best presentation I've ever heard you give. Did a good job of that.
Thank you.
Well, we ask you to do it again at seven o'clock.
All right.
We, we, we've got the issues, and we'll just summarize them, I think, and, and, but I think the general public will obviously want to have some awareness of this.
We're in the education business, as you're saying, okay? We're gonna let people know what the deal is.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, one more thing. At seven, will you make sure and explain to the public that you're an enterprise fund, the amount of funding from Iredell County? Because the article in the paper is kind of misleading, thinking the sole source of your funding is what's drying up. Will you clarify that clearly at seven?
I will.
Thank you.
All right. We can now move on to those administrative matters appropriate for our consent agenda, and I'd ask Ms. Jones if she'd go ahead and tee these up for us.
Okay, first and foremost, I apologize. We have a very healthy administrative matters with 18 agenda items, but we will, we will be as succinct as possible as we go through these. The first item is a request from EMS, and Blair Ritchie is here to make this request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 18, to use contingency funds to begin a community paramedicine program in January of 2020.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I would like to officially request the use of contingency funds to the tune of $67,310 so we can start our community paramedic program in Iredell County in January of 2020.
My only question is, with the contingency that you've got left, do you find that in the course of a budget year, you end up having to use that, that amount of money in the last six months of the year?
It, it depends. I know that's a, that's a hard, hard answer to give. It, it really does depend on any of the unforeseen things that come up, for example, and I hate to keep using this as an example, but the issue with the library and various things like that. Right now, we're, we're doing okay with contingency, so for the remainder of the six months, I think we'll be okay. I don't think we will completely deplete contingency, but something could happen tomorrow.
What is that called, force majeure? What's, what's the legal term for that?
Force majeure?
Force majeure, yeah. Short of a force majeure. Astral, you know...
Act of God.
Yeah, comets hitting Iredell County, or...
Right.
Space lab, space lab, or space shuttle falling and crashing into one of your vehicles. That should be in...
I thought that happened this morning at about 3:30 with that thunder.
That woke me up as well. I was a little confused for a minute.
Question I have is, are we gonna get snow within 12 days, or is it not officially winter, and that doesn't count?
I don't know. I'm not sure about that.
No snow, no ice.
We are already planning, we're, we are ready to go if it does come, so we're good for this.
All right, consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blair. The next item is a request from Emergency Management, and I'll just say that Mr. Green has several on the agenda that will follow, so he's gonna be standing at the podium for quite a while. But the first item is to make a request for approval to apply for an Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $35,000 to support personnel and operations.
Thank you. Hopefully I won't be here as long as you think I will, Ms. Jones. All three of these grants, the first one being the $35,000 Emergency Management Performance Grant, is what we get every year. We apply for it, as long as we meet our six criteria within the Emergency Management Program, we receive those funds, and there are no matching funds attached.
There you go, consent.
And that's the 35, the thousand, and the 10,000.
That is correct. No matching funds on any of these three. The $1,000 grant is also what we get every year. It's called a non-competitive grant, supports the Local Emergency Planning Committee. The $10,000 grant is the hazmat grant that we have used the last two years to conduct hazardous materials exercises. Again, no match.
Well, shall we do a triple consent?
Triple consent, sir.
Appreciate your work on the radio thing. Sorry I delayed your vacation in a couple hours.
That, that's okay, not a problem.
And that's an appropriate lead-in for the very next...
It is, it is.
Well, actually...
Well, kind of sort of. The radios were ordered, they will be here this week. And I was notified today, we're getting six pallets of radios delivered to the Public Safety Center, so...
Wow.
We'll have some inventorying and distribution to do once they're programmed, but I've got nothing but good comments from, from the fire departments, and I hope you don't mind, but I've told them to contact you and thank you, because that's where this money came from.
We appreciate all they do. We just gotta get them with safe equipment to communicate.
That's right.
And if they fail in the fourth and fifth year, call me. Just kidding.
Consent?
Yes. Consent.
Okay, so we're gonna move to item 8.5, which again is Mr. Green's, and this is to request, a request from Emergency Management for approval of Budget Amendment Number 16, to appropriate $26,000 from fund balance in the countywide fire service tax, tax district fund, to replenish funds transferred between line items to cover posted costs for the all-county fire tax district notice of public hearing and MAP to 63,000 property owners.
And that notice did go out on Friday of this past week. Residents have been receiving them yesterday, and today I've gotten three phone calls so far. Two were regarding, is my tax rates going up, in which their case it was not, and, I'm sorry, four calls. The other two wanted to know why they got five and six notices respectively, but based on the number of properties they own and differences in how the deeds are set up, but...
A letter per parcel.
Right. This $26,000 was currently allocated in the current countywide fire tax district as general fund transfers, so we are allowed under statute to replenish that out of revenues from the all-county service district if it goes into effect July 1st.
Basically, we paid for it out of the general fund, and you're, this is being reimbursed by the county fire.
Yes. And just so, just so the board is aware, after, after this $26,000 transfer to, to replenish and reimburse the general fund, that will leave a balance in that fire tax fund of $459,842.
Okay, so we're not into the...
No, but that was a good question. Normally what we do is we put a note at the bottom of the agenda memo telling you what the remaining balance is, and we failed to do that, so we own that 100...
Do the remaining balances of the voted-in districts and the current fire tax district, does all that money roll into the...
The voted-in districts does not. The remaining balance, if they have any fund balance in the voted-in districts, it stays there with the voted-in districts.
They would be able to use that to buy additional equipment... They would be able to use that to buy additional equipment or bells and whistles on apparatus over and above the cap that we've set for those purchases, things like that.
And that's statutorily, it can't be lumped.
That's correct.
All right. Consent?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So, the next item is a request from the health department. And Ms. Ridgeway is here to make this request to write off uncollected patient account debt from 2016 in the amount of $10,013.69. And this is in compliance with North Carolina general statute.
Good evening, everyone. So, annually, we come to you to request this write-off. The only thing that I wanted to point out this year is that there is $215 that we're requesting. That's Medicaid write-offs. And I wanted to explain what that was. In July of 2017, we moved EMR systems. And those are the systems we bill our insurance claims out of. The report we were running to work claims was missing some revenue. And we recently found a new report. And in that report, we found $1,392.50 of outstanding claims. We were able to get all of those paid except the $215. And those are timely filing, so we can't get paid for them.
What was the write-off amount last year? Do you recall?
For Medicaid?
For the uncollected patient account debt.
It was over $24,000.
Moving in the right direction.
We are, yes.
And as a percentage of your total billed accounts, what is your delinquency rate?
Right now, we have $100,000 in delinquent patient accounts. We are doing various things to try to get paid for that. We have to send those 30, 60, 90-day letters to patients. We have this year converted it to Spanish. That had not been done before. So, we're hoping that might also get a little bit more revenue in. But unfortunately, we can't make them pay us, so...
Well, thank you for the great work y'all have done.
Of course.
That Vice Chair Bowles is well acquainted with us being on the board.
We do. And those girls work hard trying to get that. I mean, they're compassionate, but they're firm.
Yeah.
And they, they won't keep seeing patients that are out.
Right.
Outstanding.
Iredell County's Health Department functions on a graduated scale for fees.
Yep.
And we provide one heck of a lot of services for very little money coming from the county. Because with the exception of, I think, reproductive health, everybody, we, everybody pays a little something. Nobody gets to walk out the door and not have to pay a nickel.
Right.
We provide a heck of a lot of services with that system. But it only works if everybody pays a little bit. And as you start getting people to pay nothing, then, then the whole, it all comes tumbling down. So, so, you know, if you've reduced it from 24,000 of write-offs to 10,000, like you said, we're heading in the right direction. But I think the public needs to understand the really, really good thing, or things that are going on at the Health Department, as long as everybody's willing to pay a little bit. If everybody chips in, it's a lighter load. Many hands make for light work in the same, when it comes to...
And it is graduated, based on...
It is graduated on income.
Right.
Keep up those efforts because the more you collect, firm and fair, the more people get treated.
Right.
Lot of state and federal dollars flowing in that department as well.
Okay. Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then I think Ms. Ridgeway is gonna present the next item, which is a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 17 for the Fire Prevention Week Grant in the amount of $400 from Safe Kids North Carolina.
Yes. So, I am going to present the Budget Amendment of $400. In October of 2019, the Safe Kids Coalition of Iredell attended or hosted a local fire prevention educational event. And when we hosted that event, we were able to apply for some grant funding. And we were awarded the $400 in grant funding for hosting that event. I do wanna just point out, it's unrestricted. We don't have to match any funding for that. And we will be purchasing bike helmets to give out in the spring when we host a Safe Kids Day.
Oh, this needs to be, go to 7 o'clock and have a real long discussion about this.
Oh, it's $400.
Time to get home and, and put dinner on the table. Consent?
Can I, can I say one little quick thing before we go? Fire prevention in our county, used to be, before we had a little brick building and two little red fire trucks, a house would catch on fire. And about 20, 30 minutes, it burned completely down. Then, we got the fire department and the two trucks. And we could pretty much keep a house burning all night long then. But now, the, now, by, by the data that is, is generated through the fire departments, only about 7% of their calls actually have to do with fire. So, through the Health Department, the schools, the Fire Marshal's Office, and the Sheriff's Department's efforts, everybody, all of the above, fire prevention works in Iredell County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The next item is a request from Tax Administration. And Ms. Miller is here to make this request. She is actually here to explain the denial of taxpayers' requests for release refunds that do not meet the statutory requirements and get board approval of that.
Good evening.
Hey. Good evening.
I think each of you have in your packet a brief explanation of this request. This started as an appeal that was filed late on, on this personal property. The appeals needed to be in within 30 days of the bill date. This came in late. At that point, the taxpayer completed a refund and release request. It's still just, it is, it is a request for a value change. And it's too late to change value on this. It is not an illegal tax. It is not a clerical error. And I would recommend that you deny the request.
Are there any questions for Ms. Miller?
Ms. Miller, just, just curious. How late was it like?
Beyond the 30 days.
Pardon me?
It was beyond the 30 days. The last day to appeal was September 9. And the taxpayer's request for a value change was September 27.
This just falls in the category of close-only counts with horseshoes and hand grenades.
That's correct.
This is stat, this is statutory too.
It is.
So, by, okay, it's by hand. So, by law, because if it exceeded the, the date, even if we think it was a really good idea, we can't, we can't change that.
That's correct. And we hold all taxpayers to, to the statutes.
Okay. So, if he had filed this within, within the, the date or within the period, would he have had a valid argument?
Yes, we would have certainly considered his appeal. And he can appeal next year.
He can appeal next year, okay.
Right.
So, so it's not like he's...
Not like all is lost.
Okay. Then my next question is, how did we happen to... If our system, and I assume that it wasn't just a person with a, you know, looked at what he had and said, oh, I, you know, I guess that's worth a pool of $3,000. It was some system that we came up that we had.
Yes, we have, we have references for values on motor boats and different personal property.
Have you had an opportunity just to take a look to see, is that, is that system, is your procedure for assigning values? Is, does it need tweaking? Or was this just an exceptional oddball?
I believe it's accurate.
You believe it's accurate?
I believe that it is accurate. Our system is accurate. We get our values from a resource called ABOSS Blue Book Guide. And many times, what the taxpayer may see, as, as, as this taxpayer does, is the purchase price that he had doesn't quite coincide with what's on the order that, that's enclosed in your packet there. I think he said... His purchase price was 36.3. And on that buyer's order, over in the right-hand column, it does say unit price, 39.955.
Well, you got a dealer discount. You got a lot of, right. But you don't, dealers get rebates, you don't see, and right, so...
And we use our resources to value consistently. So, so everybody's treated fairly.
So, when you respond, will your letter notify them that had they responded in the appropriate amount of time, that their value argument would be considered and that they can appeal again next year? Will that notify them with that?
We can certainly do that.
Or do they just get a denial letter?
The letter that he will receive from this will be a denial letter. And it will actually say that the decision was made tonight and that it was denied. He has received a letter from the tax office telling him he was too late to appeal. But we could certainly add to what we send him, that he can appeal again next year.
I think that's important to communicate.
I think that's important. I think the fact that they understand statutorily, we can't change it.
Okay.
That's, I think that's relevant and important. And I think the fact that let them know that they can appeal next year and look at the value within, and tell them the date of that. And that way, we are doing our due diligence in fairness to make sure that we're, statutorily, we can't change it due to their late situation. But we would look at it again next year if they appeal it appropriately.
Yes, sir.
So, why does it come before our board if by statute, we can only vote one way? We don't know why we're voting.
He's asked, he's asked to be heard by the board.
Okay. Oh, that was by his request.
No, the statute requires the board to render the, the...
Denial.
The denial. And then that triggers their next step, which is to Superior Court. The statute doesn't delegate that authority to staff. It only comes to the board.
But we're not allowed to vote any other way until we vote it.
Unless it meets this, there, there may be an instance where it meets one of the three criteria.
Some other thing.
Okay, but this one doesn't.
This one doesn't.
Correct.
It just gets hard to explain if a guy was a day late. You know what I mean? It's...
Yes.
Because I thought I had 30 days. Well, you count the date it come out. And, and, you know, sometimes you can figure, you know, that, that you should've got here yesterday, you know?
Fortunately, it's not a mistake in perpetuity. His ability to reclaim this is in less than a year.
But we'll make sure that, that the taxpayer's notified that he can appeal again next year.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Okay, the next item is also from Tax Administration for approval of the November refunds and releases. And there are no commissioner names on this list.
Consent.
Then next, we have Mr. Lael that has the next three, I think, agenda items. And the first is a request from Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 14 to transfer $106,840 from the Capital Improvement Plan to the Healthcare Fund to cover the additional cost for the Employee Wellness Clinic renovation.
Good evening, gentlemen. As the county manager said, we did go out to bid for the wellness clinic and received a number of bids. All of those were good bids. The low bid, however, was substantially over what the current amount is budgeted in there. So, staff has requested approval of Budget Amendment Number 14 to transfer $106,840 from Capital Improvement Plan to the Healthcare Fund to cover the cost overage of the bid to continue with the renovation of the new wellness clinic located in the Health Department complex. There are $175,000 currently budgeted for that project. And this amount will bring us up to the ability, up to our ability to be able to accept a low bid and proceed with the project.
Mr. Lael, we understand everything's more expensive. Everything's running over budget. How do we prioritize what we're pulling from CIP to make sure we're doing the projects that, one, are the most needed? Two, are gonna serve the most people? How do we come up with that?
I'm afraid I'm gonna defer to the Finance Director for that answer.
I'm sorry, Ms. Deb, to put you on the spot like that. But sooner or later, this CIP is gonna run thin. And we've got to, we just need to make sure that what we're doing is, is taking this county in the right direction.
Yes, sir. And we bring that before you every year at budget time with our Capital Improvement Plan. And you prioritize what you want us to do in the next year. And what we're able to do is money that we've saved on certain projects, we retain in that line item. And then we can use it when we need it overages for it. In other words, you approved part of this wellness clinic. We needed more money. There was money available in the CIP based on what you've told us to, to fund. And we're moving that money for the wellness clinic.
Right. And that's the, the CIP. That's kind of a shared fund though between all these projects, correct?
Yes, sir.
We need to reach back and get a little bit. That's where you get it from.
Yes, sir. Actually, it's one line item in our general fund budget. And then we transfer it out into the department's funds, wherever it needs to go to, to, to fund those projects. It moves at that time.
And if you recall, every year at our winter retreat, we kind of talk about our eight-year Capital Improvement Plan. And we talk about the projects and what our anticipated needs are gonna be. And we put some numbers on that to the best that we can, we can get at that point. And then every year during the budget process, we kind of whittle down what we're, what we're going to propose and ask for approval of that year with the board's direction because you help us prioritize that.
Right.
And then we try to get best estimates based on current market conditions of what that expense is gonna be.
So, if we take priority number one, and it needs a little CIP funds, then we take priority number two, and it needs a little CIP funds. When CIP is depleted, you can't move on with any projects if they come on, come in over what we've budgeted.
There have been times that we have delayed that project till the next year. Yes, there have been times that we have delayed that. The good news is, we have had some savings for some, for some other projects that we anticipated were gonna be a little bit more. And we were able to make some savings. And so, that gives us a little wiggle room with this. And if you'll see, the next, the next budget item is, is something very similar. The difference between this, this request and the next request is this is actually an informal bid. So, you're not being asked to approve actual bid, but you are being asked to transfer the funds for that because the transfer will go from the CIP to the wellness, the wellness line, line item in the wellness budget for this one. The next one is, those were formerly bid contracts. And that's gonna be a little different as far as the request on that one.
Because we hear it a lot out on the stump and at the stoplights. I get quoted the scripture that says, you don't begin a project unless you consider the cost. Sometimes it's very hard to consider the cost on this because the cost is a moving target, especially in an appreciating economy.
And I will say on this one specifically, the reason this one has been more is because the plumbing work, as they went in and started looking what was gonna be required. Because it is gonna be our Employee Wellness Clinic, which has been a very successful program. And I cannot thank the board enough for putting that in place. We are seeing savings, and it's paying off in strides. However, because we have to have sinks in the room and things of that nature, and we have to make some additional restrooms, the plumbing has been the problem with the construction of the facility that we're putting it in. So, we've had what we initially thought, the original estimate that we had and the, the initial group that went out and estimated the cost of this, it ended up being a whole lot more extensive on the plumbing end than what the initial...
Are we better off starting new somewhere else?
No, because I don't think we could start from scratch here and really don't have good space somewhere else to be able to do this. I don't think we could provide this for the same amount of funds somewhere else.
And this is up there beside partners, right?
This is at our Health Department, where our Health Department is located. And it was space that was previously leased to partners that they're not using and they have relinquished back. It's got a separate private entrance, it's got adequate parking, and that, really, the issue is, we're putting some walls in, making some, some exam rooms, and it's the plumbing issue is the majority of the expense.
In that case, ten years from now, if Health, if Health Department got, their scope changed, if they got bigger for any reason, then, then, since these are made for medical-type uses, if, if they ended up wanting more of their, of that building, we wouldn't have to rip all this stuff out.
No, we would not.
Correct? If, if we had to start over.
You'd move the Wellness Clinic somewhere else at that point.
Correct. We, and we could certainly do that. And there is still some extra space there that could be used for expansion purposes for either the Health Department or for the clinic. If we need to expand, there's still some space there.
My, my next question is, I'm not sure who to direct it to.
Okay.
But if, if we thought it was gonna be one, one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, and it turns out it's gonna be closer to two-eighty-one, so that's why we have to move one-hundred-and-six, almost one-hundred-and-seven thousand over, that means that our, our budget estimate was thirty-eight percent below what it actually turned out to be. So any, any time, and, and, I guess, to put it in perspective, the price of building materials, especially the price of anything metal, is really in a state of flux due to the tariff situation and the trade war. So much, so many of our metal products are coming from, from Asia, not just China, but Korea and all that stuff. So, so I'm not, I'm not doing a who-shot john.
Mm-hmm.
I understand that it's a fluid situation to, to come up with these costs. My question or my suggestion is, we do an eight-year plan. If, if some of these costs have shifted this much, and I understand that this was maybe plum, the plumbing part, we all know that the bathrooms and the kitchens of a house are the most expensive part. When we go to do our eight-year capital plan, I think, my suggestion is, let's take a look at what we said the budget might be, could be, should be, and update that for certain.
Yeah, well, and I failed to mention one of the other reasons for the cost expense increase was, we originally estimated that we would do this work in-house with our Facility Services Group, and when we saw the magnitude, what was gonna be required for the plumbing, we needed to contract it out. So that is the other part, because initially, we were gonna do this work in-house.
And ju, just so that the, the public understands what our Wellness Center, can you, can, would you mind just taking a minute or two in describing or explaining why the Wellness Center saves the county money?
Absolutely. I would love, I would love to do that. Our Employee, Employee Wellness Center is something that was initiated a few years ago, because we were seeing an escalating cost of our employee health insurance. And it, we were doing, we were having thirteen, fifteen, twenty percent increases every year, and we just could not get it under control. And we went out, we hired a new broker, we started looking at ev, every option that we could to try to get control of the continually escalating cost for our employee health insurance premiums. And one of the suggestions, since we are fully insured in the, in the case that we pay for those claims...
We're self-insured.
We're self-insured, excuse me. We pay for those claims.
True.
And, right, so until we hit a certain amount and our stop loss kicks in. So one of their suggestions was, why don't you look about doing an employee health clinic? For those things, the sinus infections, the, the ear infections, the, the strep throat, we could do a culture and write a prescription for an antibiotic, the, you know, things of that nature. Nothing, you know, no serious medical condition, but those things, or if you have, you have to do just a regular check for blood pressure, or you have to do something for routine maintenance with diabetes or things of that nature. So we looked at doing that, and we looked at what the savings would be if we had a clinic that our employees would go to, and those, those things were not on our insurance. And we, we saw, the pro forma that we looked at said, "We could see some great savings from that." So we started that clinic, and we have seen exactly that. We have seen amazing savings from that. And instead of paying those claims and our insurance, and those claims continuing to increase and escalate with the clinic, we're, we're paying for the provider to be there and provide that care. It's free to the employee. The employee doesn't have to pay a copay or anything like that, but we're also holding them accountable for their health and the fact that they have to have their annual wellness screening, they have to have their blood work, they have to do their, their routine visits to make sure that they're keeping up with their health and they're staying healthy. We've added a physical therapy clinic as well, which is helping with, we were having back injuries, which is helping with our workers' comp. We were having back injuries and knee injuries and things, specifically for those employees that have very physically intensive jobs like EMS, that are lifting patients and doing things like that. We're also having classes to teach about proper lifting, ergonomics classes for, for our staff, those that are climbing up and down ladders, doing inspections, things like that. We're having a lot of different classes that are helping with our health and wellness. We're having our physical therapy clinic that's there, that's helping them strengthen those muscles if they're starting to feel that pain in their back. What exercises can you do to strengthen those muscles so we don't have a back that goes out and then that employee is, is out indefinitely? And we're paying for back surgeries and spinal fusions and things of that nature. Knees, strengthen those muscles around those knees and the joints and things of that nature. We're seeing a lot of savings from that, and the fact that we have seen so many savings that we're able to turn around and reinvest that money. That's why we were able to do the physical therapy clinic, because we were seeing savings by keeping, our insurance rates have not been increasing, and so we're seeing those savings and we're reinvesting it back into the clinic. So that has been a, an amazing decision that this Board has made, and it is paying off in dividends. And I think that, that you all have heard positive things from employees as far as that being a benefit back to the employees that, that they do sincerely appreciate.
And I think people need to understand that we are self-insured up to a fifty-thousand-dollar level or whatever that is, so that for every dollar, you know, it's not just the insurance premium that we've been able to keep...
We're paying actual claims.
It's the real dollar.
But the real dollar is the savings.
Yes, we're paying the actual claims dollar for dollar until we hurt, hit a certain amount. So for those, for those lower-level claims, it's incumbent upon us that if we can address it for five dollars, that, and it saves us two-hundred. If you weigh the dollars, I mean, it's, it's really a, a financial win-win all the way around.
It's the employee, saves the copays, too.
Correct.
So moving forward, we need to, we need to make sure that we pay attention to our priorities on rehabbing properties and stuff like that. And we also need to depend on Mr. Lael and Ms. Cheeks that, that we are not creating an un, we're creating an unrealistic goal. We don't want, we don't wanna put all this stuff down on paper, and we all look at it on a spreadsheet and say, "This is great," and then, and then when it's time to let the bid or whatever, eh, we don't have enough money to do it, because you don't have a crystal ball. But still, if you see pitfalls that we're getting ready to step on the landmine, we want you to bring it to our attention, so, because you're down in the trenches, you see every day how, how much overrun there are on remodels.
And I will add, we did look at reductions for this, because we were looking at, at adding clinic space all the way back and said, "No, you know, we, we're already over. We need to do some trimming." And, and so, instead of, there's, there's still some space that's not part of the clinic that's there that we could add later, but really, right now, don't see the need for it. But there is room for expansion later.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but, because it's, i- i- it's our figures we handed to you, but I just wanna make sure we're not handing you something that can't be accomplished.
Absolutely, understood. Well, I think that made a good point, you know. Anytime a project comes in and it's significantly over, the first thing you do is, is you look and see, can you re-scope that? Eliminate some things that are not mission essential, that are not impacting the overall function of the service that you're looking to provide, and you just, you just make those, those cuts. And down the road, if you, if it's space, then if it turns out that you need the space, then you can address it in the future, but we're trying to hold the line everywhere we can. Okay?
I've never started a remodel project that didn't cost me exponentially more than what I thought it was gonna cost.
Okay, consent?
Consent.
The next item is also an item Mr. Lael is requesting from the, on behalf of the Finance Department for approval of the low bidder and award of a contract to perform renovations and upfits to the second and fourth floors of the Idaho County Government Center South to add office space for the Sheriff's Office and Department of Social Services.
Yeah, the County's Project Manager, David Salivi, myself, and our designer released and advertised a formal combined bid solicitation to acquire a licensed general contractor to perform the renovations on the second and fourth floor of the Idaho County Government Center South. The bids were received, opened, read aloud, recorded on November fourteenth, and we did receive three bids. All bids were compliant with the bid package and also general statute. So all bids could be considered for award under this, this solicitation. We did require that the bidders give us separate bids for each floor, one for Sheriff's Office, one for Department of Social Services, so we could account for those separately, because they are funded separately. So we have separate bids for those, but we wanted to award on a combined bid, so we'd only have one general contractor working on those two floors and in that building at one time. So that is why we, we released it that way. The lowest responsible, responsible bidder for the combined project is Holden Building Company of Greensboro. They provided a combined base bid of two-million-fifty-nine-thousand-and-ten dollars, including allowances, upfits, and contingency. You should have a certified bid tabulation in your package. And the funds for these projects are budgeted in the County CIP Fund and will be transferred upon approval into the two accounts so that we can track those projects separately. Our recommendation and request tonight is that you award the bid to low bidder Holden Building Company for the combined bid amount. Authorize us to go ahead and negotiate the contract terminology, and then provide, or to give Ms. Jones authorization to sign that final contract.
Any questions?
Ms. Jones, can you give us an overview of these projects? And the, I think we've bid them multiple times, trying to get the cost down.
We have, um, we have, and Chairman Mallory kind of, kind of paved the way for this, for this story. We have actually bid this one four different times. So the first bid, poor Mr. Lael, the first bid, we did not receive any bids for. The first time we bid it out, no one bid on it. The second time we bid it out, we had two responses, but neither one of them had all the appropriate required documentation, so we had to reject both of them. The third time we bid it out, we, we received one bid, and it was dramatically over our budget, and we didn't have the funds to cover it. And so what we did is, we dropped back. We did exactly what Chairman Mallory was saying, exactly what we've done on other projects, and said, "Okay, we are very much over budget. We need to re-scope. What can we scale back? What can we eliminate? What can we, you know, what do you have to have? What is a necessity? And what is a like-to-have? And what is I'd like for later?" So we went back, you know, worked with Department of Social Services, worked with the Sheriff's Office, and scaled back. The original bid that we had had about fourteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten square feet in it between both floors and both projects. There was a reduction of four-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten square feet where we scaled back things, and then we prepared those bid documents, sit those, sent, waited for a little while, because the advice that we were receiving was, since this is an interior renovation project, the best time to bid that is in the colder months, in the winter, because the contractors are, don't have as much work, outside work, because of the conditions and the weather. So we rebid it, and we received three good qualified bids on the projects. But I will say that they are, they're scaled-back projects from the initial one that we did, and I, we, they're, they are over budget, and I will say that they are over budget. One of the reasons that they're over budget is because the initial numbers had us doing design work, asbestos removal, demolitions separately, and when we bid it, we put it all together. If we're gonna have one contractor there, you know, we did the design work and paid for that, but then the remainder of the funds, we just put the demolition, asbestos evacuation, and construction all together in, in the project. Does that help answer your question?
Now, this is the old Lowrance Hospital.
Correct, down in Marshall.
I think it was originally heated with steam.
Two-pipe, two-pipe steam system.
And, you know, anytime you get into an older building like this, I think the plumbing is the primary issue. So have we looked at all the opportunities to reduce or eliminate redundancies in terms of plumbing?
Um, we do have, and in the way it was bid in the project, we do have some additional restrooms and things of that nature that are added in some of the projects that if, if you wanted to scale back some of those, you could. We did already scale back specifically in the DSS space. They had break rooms, they had collaboration space, because they're doing their, their labs, their collaboration labs, things of that nature, conference room, family rooms where the families could come, and they have their own space to, to do their visitations and things. We did cut those out, and we focused strictly on office space for those employees, and we cut a lot of that other stuff out where, you know, we could come back later and add that. And I also will say that for the DSS space, there are some state dollars that will come back to reimburse us with that partnership with the, with the state and some of the funding for that. We don't know how much that is, so we have not taken that into consideration, and that's on the DSS side. So, but...
Now, most of that space was on the other side of the hall.
Correct.
So if you came in to upfit that, it wouldn't interfere significantly with operations.
Yes, we basically cut out, if, we're, we're renovating the hallway and one whole side for office space. The other side behind those doors, we're not renovating. But that would be, that was where those breakout rooms and that collaboration space and all that was intended to be, and some additional offices that we've cut out that were for future expansion.
Can, can I give some unsolicited advice at this point? I'm the only commissioner sitting on this bench that voted to buy the hospital. Can I give advice to any future sitting Board member? That if anybody ever brings up buying a hospital, I, I recommend you get up and walk out of the meeting. If I had one vote in my lifetime to take back, I believe this is one. This is it. And it doesn't mean that we didn't need a, a Government Center South. I'm saying, for the money that we've spent hindsight, over almost twenty years, we could've built a brand-new facility. Just saying. I feel, I feel like you need to step up to the plate. If you vote for something, you need to own it.
Well, the only other hospital that we bought is one we tore down.
And look how great that went.
It took a while.
Man, you should've stopped while you were behind there.
I'm saying, run. Get up and run out of the meeting if need be. That's just lesson learned. And I would like to make one other comment. I come, that, that Government Center South is between me and McDonald's every morning. I ride by there a lot. The parking lot that we have leased to the state is only about three-quarters utilized, ever. We need to, we need to think, we need to really press that issue next time contracts come out.
We've got it on here, and we've already, we're reclaiming some of that parking space, and Dean Lael's been working on that for, what, four years?
Since two thousand fifteen.
Since two thousand fifteen, and we finally have got it done, and we've got a lease that's actually, I think, next on the list.
Yeah.
Okay, that's next on the list.
That's a great, that's a great lead-in.
But it, but it is, it's desperately needed.
As long as we've squeezed every penny out of this reduction, you know, we need to...
So on the fourth floor, that leaves the one side of the hall for future needs if needed. What's left on the second floor, if anything, after the renovations are there?
Fourth floor only has half as much space, doesn't it? Isn't there one floor that's not as big as the other three?
I believe that is the fourth floor, yes, sir.
I think that's the fourth floor.
That's where operating was, so. It's not quite as big.
Try to remember, everything that is on the second floor, we've already upfit part of it, I believe, and this is the other, and I think this is everything, but I'd have to go back and check plans.
I, I think there might be a small space that's still left to be renovated, maybe, on the far side.
Yeah, part of the wing, that, that other wing, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a very small area.
So on the, on the fourth floor, the reduction in size was the working lab space, the break room, some offices, the kitchen, made the lobby smaller, a function area or work area, or what'd you call it?
Yeah, I'd ask for a list. On the fourth floor, the elimination or reduction in scope was conference room, break room, two family rooms, observation room, the collaborative lab space. There was a kitchenette area... lab space. There was a kitchenette area, and then some office space that was eliminated in that one.
What's the square footage on that?
The majority of the reduction, which was the 4,110, was in that space, the majority of the square footage reduction.
Oh, okay, so the total second, well, what's the proportion between the fourth floor and second floor of changes or reductions or whatever?
Let me look and see if I have that. I don't have the breakout in square footage between the two floors. I don't know if it's in here or not. I can, yes. I can crunch those and get those back to you as far as the square footage on both floors. And I can get you the breakdown of the square footage reductions on both floors, if you want me to bring that back.
So what was the reduction, or if you want to get that later, if you don't have it, what was the reduction on the second floor?
There was a, there was a change on the second floor. According to this, the second floor, well, really, there was a, there was an alternate. There was some, there were three offices, from what I understand, that was initially bid, and the first bid was an alternate, and then that was included back in the base bid. And it says here, and this is according to the architect, the primary, the majority of the reduction was on the fourth floor space, not on the second floor space. So really, the change between the first bid to the second bid was converting an alternate to be included in the base bid in the second, the second bid that we bid out, this one.
Well, is there any redundant plumbing on the second or fourth floors?
Well, I will say, what we did on, on this is we asked for, when we got the bids, we asked them to give us a breakout and tell us what is the cost, the renovation cost for office space, because that's primarily what we're, what we're dealing with and what we're, what we're needing desperately is the office space. So what's your price per square foot, and what's your price for the office space renovation? And then if there's anything other than office space that requires plumbing, that requires things like that, give us that. It wasn't bid as an alternate, but we had them break it out specifically in the bid. On the second floor, there were, there were two spaces with additional plumbing that was needed, two restroom areas that were needed for that, and that was kind of broken out, which is additional to the office space. So one was a smaller restroom, and the other was a, I hate to use the word gang restroom, but it was, it had several stalls and could be used that way.
Communal.
Correct, correct, yes.
So there's one public bathroom. What's the other one?
The other was a smaller, a smaller private restroom.
It's got right here, upfit room, 2013 shower, 11-6.
That one had a shower. That's in the larger restroom, and that's in the one where if officers needed, if they worked a scene or something, and they needed to come and shower and change uniforms and things like that.
The staff, not public, obviously.
Correct, correct. That was, that's a staff restroom and stuff that had a shower in it.
So they have a secure, they have a secure area to take a shower or something if they need to. So...
None of those are public restrooms?
None of those are public.
The public restroom is on that floor, but it's not that restroom. There's already a public restroom on that floor.
So what's 2009 restroom? Because you've got a shower and restroom, so is there not a restroom in the, is that just 11,600 shower, or is it a full bathroom?
That's a full bathroom. That one is a full bathroom.
So what is, what is the 9,000, a separate bathroom?
That's a separate bathroom. It's a private bath.
For?
In an office space.
Well, that doesn't seem like mission essential to me.
So there is a full bathroom in the facility that's got a shower and multiple stalls for that space?
Yes, there are, there are public restrooms available on that floor, and then there is a larger restroom with a shower and stuff for, for any officers.
Staff.
Correct.
But the general public cannot access that?
My understanding, is that a general public? I don't think that one's a general public.
Or inter-office, for inter-office use.
Correct. Yes. The public restroom is on that floor, but it's, it's there. It's not being added to that space.
I'm just saying proportionately, if we've reduced, reduced the last project and reduced the fourth floor, if we can take any reduction just to save ourselves some criticism potentially from the public, if it's not mission critical, can, can, can they, can you live without that second private bathroom if you had to?
Is that, is that private bathroom for if someone's in the other bathroom taking a shower, then you've got, staff's got a second bathroom to use? Is that the purpose?
I don't believe it has access. I think you have to access it from an office. It's not a hallway-accessed restroom. I think it is in a private office.
I'm not aware of any other offices that have private bathrooms anywhere in the county.
I'm...
Do you?
I'm not aware of any. No. No.
I'd say approve it minus that bathroom. Saves nine or $10,000. I think the first time I saw it, it was 30 or something. It was significantly more.
And I, and I think that was with all of them included, and then when we asked them to break it, and that was one of the reasons we asked them to break it out and let, tell us what we're actually looking at here, as far as the cost for office space versus restrooms and things of that nature. So that's one of the reasons we asked them to kind of spell that out, because that other one was a large number.
That way, we can at least say there's some equitable proportional cuts in scope on all these CIP projects.
Yes, we can.
It's over budget as well.
Yes.
We bid the thing four times.
We have bid it four times. I will say that, that it is over budget, unfortunately, but in all honesty, we've bid it four times. This is probably the best price we're going to get, and everything that we...
Best time of year.
I'm sorry, what?
How much over budget are we?
Do you have that number?
I'm afraid I do not, no ma'am.
The first time was 200 plus over budget, I think.
Yeah, and...
200,000 or more over budget, the first bid we got.
First bid was, yes, sir.
This one?
I don't have that budget figure, sir.
You mean, are we talking, are we $4,000 over, or are we $140,000 over?
Hold on, I can pull it up.
I'm just trying to get the order of magnitude.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if we're only over a couple of thousand dollars, I don't want to screw up, screw up plans and bids because to save $2,000. But if we're $100,000 over, then that's different.
I'm sorry, I'm looking quickly.
Well, why don't we see if we can get the numbers and just crunch those a little bit?
Okay.
Because if you're going, if you're going to cut anything, you're not going to be able to put it on consent.
Yes.
Arguing.
Well, we can have a, we can have it on consent with an idea of, of us looking at the numbers later and then indicating, okay, stay with what you have, or go with a cut based on the big picture. And we can just communicate that by email to...
Let's just see if, can Dean try to get that while we finish the consent agenda? Maybe he can get that information from downstairs while we're doing that? Is that...
He's next up on the next item.
I can, let me know.
He's got two legs.
I got two legs.
We don't want to hold up things, because the issue is trying to get a window, but let's get those numbers.
Okay. We'll get it. Okay, so we're gonna...
We'll just hold that open, and then at the seven o'clock hour, we can tell you whether to add that to consent.
Okay, and we'll have those, we'll have those numbers. Okay, so the next item again is Mr. Lael, and this is a request from Finance Department for approval of an eight-year lease with the Department of Environmental Quality for 26,871 square feet of office space on the third and fourth floors of Aridale County Government Center South.
Yeah, Aridale County has leased this 26,870-foot, square foot area of office space. It's around 2004, 2005, when we renovated that building. We renovated this space specifically for them, so it is upfit for them. And we have continued that lease for many years. That particular lease expired in 2016, and DEQ would like to keep their presence in that building. We typically would like to keep them here. It makes things run very smoothly for Department of Environmental Quality and for their Aridale County and regional operations. They would like to initiate a new lease for this, and prior suggestions have been that we go no more than eight years on this lease with no renewals, and then at that time, the board will be able to consider the lease, consider the space, decide whether that space is still needed or not, and then at that time, we can renegotiate a new lease at that time with Department of Environmental Quality.
Four years later, get a response?
I hope not. I don't think that will be me next time, but...
A decade later.
Is that why you made this eight years?
Really?
Pretty much. Are you in that baby boomer cohort that he just talked about?
We were going to start with a 14-year lease, but they used up five years in negotiations. But anyway...
Thinking about it.
Thinking about it, exactly. Yes, sir. When we first started this lease and the, the second renewal of this lease, we started in 2016. That expired in 2016. They were paying $16,794 per month. With this new one, I was asked to, to look at the space, do a market analysis, analysis, try to find out what'd be the best cost price to charge for that. Within that amount, we did negotiate new amounts, and the initial payment for that will be $376,194 payable monthly. That'll be annually and be payable monthly. And then each year, we will have a 1.25% increase to that, and there is a schedule of payments laid out in the lease that increase up to $410,168.76 on year eight. So that way, we can keep up with the ongoing increases in janitorial, utility, which are included in the lease, and keep the space up to a relatively current market, market value for us. Again, the lease is eight years. There are no annual extensions. There are no options to extend after that. We will have to negotiate that lease. One part of that lease that we did look at, the parking lot, as one of the, one of the board members did mention, is in bad disrepair. Plus, there's a lot of it that is not being used. During the redesign of that and looking at that parking lot, we have reduced their number of parking spaces by about 35, down to 100 parking spaces, which will include staff and state-issued vehicles, plus any other equipment that they may have to park there, like boats, trailers, et cetera. So we'll be reducing and getting about 35 parking spaces back out of that, which should eliminate that empty parking lot appearance.
Because that's hard to explain on court day when you've got...
It is.
And you can't use it, you know?
One of the things that we did find out while we were negotiating this lease and talking with them about this, one of their staff mentioned that the fence that we had initially intended to put around, that we had initially proposed to put around that parking lot, they suggested it wasn't needed. So the county manager and I eliminated that fence from this proposal. So that should save us considerable amount when we do repave that parking lot, but we will repave it. We will put up a new gate with either cards or keys of some sorts to where the staff can open it, and, but it will not be fenced. So we will gain about 35 to 40 parking spaces, and they will keep 100, and they will not get fenced.
With the conditions of this new lease, you say we are to repave the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
My understand, my understanding of that was that there is a parking lot plan already submitted to the town of Mooresville.
That is correct.
And to dance to that tune is going to be a relatively big ticket item.
That is correct.
Jeff and I are no longer in the paving business. He's out of town too much now. But the, but that, so we need to keep that in mind on this particular lease.
And, and that is in our CIP for that. But if you remember, the parking lot plan was submitted, and the town of Mooresville turned over Evergreen to the county as part of that, and that was contingent on moving forward with the parking lot.
I mean, when you look at this rent schedule, it looks very favorable to the county, but that's not the whole picture. We've got to spend some money to get that.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Correct, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any further questions? Consent?
Consent.
And I would just like to thank Mr. Lael for his diligence in working with this for, since 2015, to get this lease renewed and updated. So thank you for that.
How many unreturned phone calls did you hear?
I stopped counting. I think I went through five state representatives on this agreement before finally coming to the last one who helped me bring it in. It's been interesting. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Mr. Lael, before you leave, I have found numbers, so if you don't mind occupying that spot for one more time, Mr. Chairman, do you mind if we circle back to the previous item? So hopefully, we can address some of those concerns. But if the overage for the second floor renovation was to the tune of $158,760, the overage for the fourth floor renovation, which is the larger space that was being renovated, the fourth floor was $355,411. So that, those were the overages, and if you look at as a percent of the total cost of the project, it was about 24.9% over budget. But I will say that it was lower than the previous bid that we, that we received, and the primary reason for the overage is because we included the asbestos and demolition in this bid price. So, but that is the, those are the overages on the second and fourth floor. I will also say that there, there's some, some funds that will come back once we finish the fourth floor renovations that we have not taken into consideration, because we don't know how much those will be for that state funding.
So $50,000 over?
Roughly, yes. Correct.
Yeah, Tommy, at some, at some point, this, that well is going to be a problem. Okay, and that's a different conversation.
Right.
For a different topic.
So I would, if we want to circle back in terms of the sum and substance of the approval...
Wait, is it a handicap issue?
No.
Okay, okay.
Well, I would consent to a approval of the bid less the private bathroom.
Okay. I will consent to that as well.
Consent? Everybody consent? Okay, okay. Then we're good.
Again, thank you, gentlemen.
The next item is a request from Finance Department, and Ms. Cheek is here to make this request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 15 to appropriate $73,511 in juvenile crime prevention funding for the Raise the Age Initiative.
Good evening. I serve on the JCPC Board at your appointment, and you've heard us talk about Raise the Age is coming, Raise the Age is coming, and it is, it is here. And this will expand juvenile offerings to 16- and 17-year-olds. And so the state has allotted us some funding to continue for the next six months, and that amount of funding was $73,511. The JCPC Board met last week. We listened to all the programs give their, their pitch for how they would spend this money, and the board came to the decision. We have funded four programs that we already had in place. We have given them additional expansion funds. And then we had one program called Expire Youth, Inc., and they have a culinary program that will get these students into a job at the end of their service with them. And so we decided to give them some funding to get that started and sort of pilot that funding out for the next six months before we determine our full funding for next year. So I'm just here to ask you to appropriate that $73,511.
Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Yes, sir.
We don't have a whole lot of choice on some of these items, do we?
Correct.
Simply don't.
Correct.
The next item is also a request that Ms. Cheek will make on behalf of the Finance Department for adoption of a resolution calling for a bond referendum.
Yes, I'm asking tonight for approval of a resolution calling for a bond referendum. What this resolution does, it directs staff to provide information to our Elections Department as far as to the dates, the time when this election, this referendum needs to be held. It also directs them as to what the ballot needs to say. Pardon me. It directs the clerk to put a notice of bond referendum in the local paper. And, I'm sorry. And I also said that it directs the question. And then the clerk will be directed to have this form in front of our Board of Elections within three days after your adoption of this resolution.
Chairman doesn't have to read this.
No, we don't have to read this.
No, sir.
I read that last time.
No, sir, you do not.
Can we consent?
Yeah, no, I think we can.
Yes, sir, we can. Bond Council did say, "At your pleasure." You can consent this.
We have had two public hearings, one required and one in addition.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
The chairman should sing it.
Yes, well, I would drive everyone from them. Okay, consent?
Consent.
I do think, though, that I need a motion to actually approve the resolution.
We can't do motions.
You can't do that on consent? Okay.
So pull it from consent and do a motion at seven?
Okay, do a motion at seven.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cheek.
Okay.
It need to be worded a specific way.
Ms. Cheek, does that need to be worded a specific way, the motion?
Just that you're calling for the resolution for the bond referendum. And I will lay the directions right there in front of you. Be sure you have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from Administration for approval to expend $100,000 of economic development funds as a local match for a $2 million grant from the North Carolina Department and Transportation Division of Aviation to be used for taxiway lighting. If you remember that this is a continuation of a request from Statesville Airport that Mr. Ferguson made at our last meeting.
Hello, Ms. John, how are you doing?
Good, I'm good.
Good.
You covered this last night.
Yeah, I had a few questions relative to which line item this exactly was coming out of.
Ms. Cheek, we're talking about the economic development funds and the airport request.
And while she's coming to the podium for the board, we had our airport meeting, and we conveyed, John and I conveyed to the chairman and the board, the concerns about where possible put all these forecasted projects as far out, so we can strategically plan for them and budget for them and things like that. So we did your request and made sure that information was transferred to the city and to the airport commission.
Thank you.
Do you have the budget expenditure report that's in the packet?
Yes.
Okay. And Chairman Mallory had some questions regarding which line item...
Which line item is this come out of? I mean, we have several that have, you have year-to-date expended, and you have encumbrances. And some line items have been used 100%. Others are, I'm just curious, is which line item it was coming out of?
We were planning to take that from project development. The reason you see an encumbrance there, $657,000, is we have to encumber those funds to roll them each year. That doesn't necessarily mean that those funds are designated for something in particular, but the fact that we need to retain them each year if they weren't expended in the prior year. That way, we don't have to come back and re-ask for funds to be allocated each year.
Okay. Probably need to put an asterisk by that with an explanation, because it looks like it's just encumbered.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that answers the question.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Consent?
Yeah, consent.
Thank you for coming back, John.
Yep, appreciate it.
Got some other questions.
Do you want to see his presentation, or are you good?
I think he's ready to beat Pete.
We're good, John. Thank you, brother.
Okay.
John's dealt with government enough to where if you get a yes, don't say anything.
Okay, the next item is a request from Administration for appointing a delegate, an alternate to the Central Atlanta Council of Government Board of Delegates. And if you remember, at our last meeting, you appointed non-elected members. And this is for your elected appointees and delegates to that board.
Who's been the previous delegate? I think it's been Mr. Howe, Commissioner Howe, if you're willing to continue to serve in that capacity.
Yeah, I'm good.
And alternate?
I don't remember. That was Jeff.
Is Marvin volunteering?
I think he's going to call in.
Wait a minute, I heard that from the hospital note.
Okay. Well, you can put me down as alternate since we haven't had a stand-impede.
Thank you, Lord.
Consent?
Consent.
The next item on the agenda is election of chairman and vice chairman for the Board of County Commissioners that we must do in December of each year.
Okay. Does that would need to be a motion? Wouldn't that need to be a motion as well?
Can we do this by consent, or do we have to do it at the 7:00 by motion?
I think you've done it by consent in the past.
Okay.
In the off-years.
Okay.
My support would be the remain the same chairman and vice chairman. Y'all have done a pretty good job so far.
Yeah.
No major complaints.
They haven't bought any hospitals in this term.
That's right.
Okay. All right.
And also, for the record, I did call Commissioner Norman, who's under the weather, and he was okay with that, too. So it would be unanimous if he were here.
I spoke to him as well. Okay. All right, then, continue to march as we are with the same seat assignments. Correct? Consent?
Consent.
Okay.
Consent.
And then the final item is a request from the clerk to the board for approval of the minutes from the meetings on November the 15th and 19th, 2019.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Consent?
Consent.
We'll announce one vacancy on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council at the 7:00 hour. And then we have a number of different appointments to boards and commissions on item 10. And there are, the Board of Equalization and Review has six appointments, and six, or five, have volunteered to serve again. And we have an additional Jennifer Christian, who has volunteered for the first time. That makes six out of six appointments. And we'll announce these, obviously, at the 7:00 hour. The Board of Health has seven appointments, of which four are specific to professions. And there are four volunteers. And, actually, there's five of those. And there's an optometrist seat, and there are two applicants. And there is a general public seat where there are three applicants. So we will need to choose between those individuals. Are there, is there any discussion?
I've got the Health Board some recommendations on those.
Okay, if you could share those, that would be good.
Yes, we have.
Can we resume this at seven?
Sure.
Absolutely.
It's not a consent item.
That way to get a close session out of the way, I guess.
Okay. All right, so there's the other boards, Charlotte Regional Partnership, one person for one appointment, that's covered down. JCPC, there's two that cover down on two as well. Transportation Advisory, there's two volunteers for the two appointments. And there's four appointment, there are four volunteers for the zoning board of adjustment for the four appointments. There are five applicants for the three vacancies on the Personnel Advisory Committee. So we'll divvy up who will make the motions before we have the 7:00 meeting.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Unfinished business, the I-77 quarter, do that at 7:00? That's new business.
Yes.
The unfinished business was the...
Bluefield Road.
Yeah, Bluefield Road. And that'll be at 7:00.
We can do that at 7:00, yes.
And county manager's report as well. And closed session, we can adjourn to go in a closed session for purposes of economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A4, as well as attorney-client issues to discuss pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A3. With nothing further to add to the pre-agenda, then we are moving to closed session. With nothing further to add to the pre-agenda, then we are moving to closed session.